Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us today. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a City of Hardyville and Jasper County Joint Council Workshop. At two, what was his address? Two eighty-five John Smith Road, Hardyville, South Carolina, two nine nine two seven. Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five at one P. M. Uh, this is a workshop in the way we operate during a workshop is, uh, we have very reduced, uh, rules of order, meaning that, uh, anyone can speak whenever they have something to say. But just ask everyone to make sure that the previous speaker has completed and yielded the floor, whatever thoughts they were having. So, uh, having said that, you do not have to be recognized by chair to, to speak. Um, just to start us off. This is a great day. That we're coming together to talk. We have, uh, new councils on, on both ends of this dais here. And it's my hope that we're starting a new day in Jasper County. A day where we can come together on a regular basis and talk about our common challenges, our common goals and common solutions. This kind of cooperation and being done with the respect for each other's opinions, being able with that respect to disagree with each other, I think is very important in all parts by communicate. And so I'm going to end my thoughts with a little quote. And I'll show my age a little bit. This is from the movie of Castle Black. Humphrey Bogart said to Claude Rains, Louis, I think this is the beginning of a beautiful friendship. On that note, the first subject is a presentation from Jasper County. And I'm going to turn this over to Administrator Andy Falcon.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for that introduction. We have a short presentation for you and the presenter is going to be Ms. Lisa Wagner, Director of Planning Billing Services for Jasper. Lisa?
Good afternoon, council members. Give me just a minute to figure out what I'm doing. I just want to make, okay. Jasper County's comprehensive plan Jasper's Journey was updated in two thousand and eighteen. The community principles are to protect and foster the rural character of Jasper County that defines our sense of place. Take pride in its land through the stewardship of historic, natural and cultural resources and reduction in litter and blight. Support economic development initiatives to provide jobs, education and training to our community. Prioritize the maintenance of existing infrastructure over the development of new infrastructure by guiding growth and development to the places most suitable to serve new development. Embrace collaboration with other governmental leaders, education providers, non-governmental organizations, and the community to address community challenges and embrace opportunities particularly, particularly related to education, equity and leadership. Uh, this is a snapshot of the future land use map. I've cropped it just focusing on the southern portion of the county. The darker yellow areas are designated as urban transition areas, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County. They're partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For new development, redevelopment and rezonings within these areas, the county recommends working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-three through spring of two thousand and twenty-four, Jasper County conducted a five-year update to the county's comprehensive plan with a focus on the land use and community facilities element. At the time, the U-Haul Broad River area was under a moratorium for new development to allow time for the partial update of the future land use map. During this initial phase, Jasper County also conducted a review and prepared updates to the land use regulations, particularly pertaining to the U-Haul Broad River planning area. More information about the proposed land use regulations pertaining to the U-Haul Broad River planning area can be viewed on the county's website. The, um, web address is there in red. You'll also find an interactive, uh, map of that area. Once the county has completed the work with the U-Haul Broad River planning area, the county intends to develop a special area plan for the Levy area, which is a goal that was identified in the comprehensive plan. That is all that I have for you, but just really wanted to point out, um, those areas where we do recommend, um, annexation in that urban transition area. And just to hit you so, so where we're heading and, um, our policy already to promote, um, annexation within the urban transition area. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions.
Okay. Uh, let's open it up to council, either council. And again, we have, uh, not everybody has a microphone, so we're sharing. Uh, if anyone has a question for Lisa?
I'm sir. Promotion. Can you define what your need and the promotion?
Well, what we do is we really just, um, we recommend that a conversation be had with the city of Hardyville. If, um, someone comes to us for a rezoning, uh, new development or a redevelopment, and they're in that urban transition area, we recommend that they go to the city of Hardyville and talk to your planning staff.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got some.
Oh. Uh, with that being said, uh, looking at these areas in that urban transition and everything with the quote-unquote donut holes that we have that are kind of around the areas. Uh, I think it is very paired up to, to work closely between the two agencies to make sure that we're doing the best for the service delivery level. That way we're kind of preventing these downed holes from existing because as things grow and things get a different, different, uh, developments and things come throughout the area, it just makes it a lot easier. When it is one jurisdiction to, to be able to look at that, it just makes everything flow smoother, in my opinion, with that whenever you're going pockets of this next door neighbors, the city, this is the county, and then the next door neighbor city, county, it just makes it a lot easier to be in one area, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
And I'm pretty new at this with the two thousand and eighteen, but is there any coordination between Hardyville's growth pattern and our annexation policy?
And what I'm saying is to be, and it's maybe a question, and not for you as much as for Hardyville. Hardyville has a growth with boundaries.
And I think that was just done or pretty close.
Few years ago.
Years ago.
Is on our agenda.
Okay.
So I, sorry.
That's okay.
Woke up back. Anyone else?
The reason I brought the question forward is because the duplication of services is expensive. And we're all looking out to get the best bang for the buck and service, uh, the taxpayer the best. And we currently have a lot of overlapping of services. That's not efficient. Um, and as we grow and we are growing, uh, Hardyville, Jasper County Ridge, we're all growing. This isn't something that we can sit with a five-year standard with. The economics of this are here now, and we really need to move very fast to, to make this happen. The donor polls that, uh, Mr. Raul has, uh, expressed, we have some significant donor polls. We're not talking two or three homes. We're talking two and three hundred homes. And efficient wise, it's not, it's just not the way that we should be all practicing good business or good government.
I completely agree with you. I stay confused myself as to where those boundaries are, so.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Duplicated services, uh, fire department, that can be one of our big things right now that we might be interested in. Fire districts. Of course, near and near to my heart, talk about it, uh, voter registration. And I, I guess this is more of a workshop thing, and so I'd kind of like to bounce off some ideas to kind of move this thing forward because I think we all talk about what we want to do. But I think, like this mayor said, now is a good time to really get it going. So does anybody have any thoughts on things that we might be working together as root?
Uh, other than those two items? What I would suggest, um, is that is the third item on our agenda. And, uh, it's there for a reason. So what I would suggest that we hold that conversation till we get to that point in the agenda. Okay. I'd like, I, I'd like to, um, ask the question, make, whatever. I think, but we're all here today, and one of the reasons we're here. The group norm this day is we're, we're here, we're policymakers. And I think it's very important to understand and to develop policies, whether they be annexation, um, donut holes, whatever, with shared services. Hopefully we can develop policies rather than talk about specific angst and, and, because there have been many situations. And anybody who's followed me over the last nine years knows that I've had some issues, but that we're not here for that today. So my question having said that. What is the county's position? In your comprehensive plan? It's to push, um, anyone who comes into that area to be annexed. What if? What is the policy if the city says that's not in the best interest of our city to have that project?
Within our city.
Mr. Mayor, if I could catch that one as, I think that's what we're here today to talk about. You know, the past and how we have had a policy of trying to steer the development toward the municipality. I think you're, uh, suggesting that perhaps we shift gears and get a little stronger policy. And we're, we're very perceptive and receptive to that idea. Uh, once the city, uh, talks about their growth boundary, I think then we can all focus on the unincorporated properties that are within that growth boundary. And perhaps, uh, a series of suggestions about how we may tighten up or increase that policy uh, to achieve what the city and the county both intend.
That, thank you, and that's really where I was getting. It, we need to establish some sort of policy because and avoid the situations that we've had over the last number of years where the city has declined annexation. Or a developer has declined to annex in because they want to pay city taxes, uh, or whatever. How do we deal with those things? And that's where I think one of the decisions to your point, Andy, that we need to try to come to conclusions today. I do have one suggestion, and when, uh, when we get more to the annexation. Perhaps when these situations come up, that these should be joint meeting decisions. Rather than have a situation where I know this council and our council on the best have made some annexation decisions based on thinking that the county was going to do it if we didn't. But if we had a joint meeting and we could air everything out and make a joint decision, though that kind of, and I refer to that as zone shopping. We can eliminate that. But whatever way we deal with it, the, the idea of having policy when these situations come up, I think is so important and one of the things that we can accomplish here today. Any other thoughts?
I agree. And I think we're at least I speak for the council, our Gasser council. We've been in existence for six months now. We have leadership lunches. We have leadership lunches with Buford. We are now having a joint meeting with the planning boards. We see all that. Now it's our time in the, between the council Hardyville and Jasper and even Ridgelet to start up getting to do things jointly. We talk about joint services, just having joint ideas, carry of what's going on. I think we're going that way, and this meeting is here. I think this is the first meeting I've ever been to in this situation where we had a workshop this way. So I think we're, we're on the right track. We have new ideas in, in our council, my council. And it's not my council, but it's Jasper council. But I think we're doing the right thing. I think we all realize that we're growing and we can't do it the old way. We have to do it the new way. Together we survive, separate we, we lose. So, thank you.
And what else before we go to the next agenda item? Okay, Lisa, time very much. Thank you, Lisa. Oh, and Lisa, one other, uh, request?
Yes.
What you put up here, could our council have that, please?
Yes.
You could forward it to Cindy and she'll get it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I understand we, we got it this morning.
Yes.
I didn't open that email. Okay, I won you. See you Monday. Um, next, we're gonna bring up the city of Hardyville's presentation, and we are going to start with annexation and growth boundaries. Uh, Chris Matt Davis.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, council. You know, I think the big takeaway already for me is that clearly we're all on the same page. We just have to get the right words down on that page. So that's a great start. But just to give you a, a kind of a brief history, um, probably maybe someone in the council who weren't in office at the time, as well as the county council. In two thousand and twenty-one is when we, um, well, we incorporated or adopted our, our growth and annexation policy. And that was a direct follow-up to our comprehensive plan. It was adopted in July of two thousand and nineteen. And it's, uh, suggested that we do have that annexation plan, create a map with a logical boundaries, and then establish criteria as well for us to review and consider annexations, you know, um, the pros and cons for the city. You know, as the mayor alluded to, you know, it, just because someone asks for an annexation doesn't mean it's an automatic thing. It has to be a good, it has to be a good decision for the city of Hardyville long term. Uh, so why establish that policy? Uh, certainly, as you've already talked about, avoid the duplication of services. And as Lisa said, and others, historically, the county has encouraged annexation at those projects that are contiguous to the city boundary. Uh, it makes a lot of sense. And then again, just those economic reasons, certainly environmental areas can be protected. Um, again, that growth boundary and certainly cooperation between all of us. You know, the city of Hardyville, uh, and Jasper County. And then finally, at the last point is something that I've stressed ever since we created this was that with our growth boundary, it is not a developed to line. It is a do not go beyond line. I think that's always very important because there are certainly areas within that growth boundary that we defined that probably will never be in the city, and that's okay. But we wanted to follow some, some, uh, some logical places to make that boundary. You can see in the map, the shaded area is the current city boundary. The, uh, magenta line, purple line is, uh, is, is our growth boundary. And there's really not a whole lot left really, except a, a big portion of it is certainly the, uh, Ori plantation. You know, right in this area. I mean, and there's certainly some donut holes, as you talked about, some of those are quite problematic for a lot of reasons. Some are Irish property, just it's difficult to get everyone together. And at this point, the city has never entertained, you know, kind of involuntary annexations with just, you know, it's people who have asked to be in the city, and we haven't even entertained any other way to, to do that at this point. But typically, it's essentially our boundary, our suggested both ground boundary is the, uh, BJ, BJWSA, uh, canal to the north, uh, highway one seventy kind of to the, to the east as well as the New River, and then three fifteen, and then to the west and the south. It's the existing city boundary for the most part, and then this, you have the Savannah, um, existing city boundary in the Savannah Wildlife Refuge. US seventeen is essentially the, the area that we've identified as our boundary area. And then these are the annexations that we've, um, adopted since, since two thousand and twenty-one. The biggest one obviously was the card tract, uh, far and away the biggest, probably about eighty percent of all of it. It's about thirty-one acres in total, uh, that we have annexed in, in those, uh, that four years. Uh, the two at the bottom are actually under consideration right now. They, um, we've already had workshops on them, but they have not been formally uh, petitioned. We have not been formally petitioned for annexation, but we're considering these now. But that's, that's where we are right now, and that's what we've done. And I'll, I'd be happy to entertain any questions if I can.
Matt, for the folks that may be watching this online.
Sure.
Can you explain that South Carolina does not have, uh, statutes for forced annexation? It's all voluntary annexation? What is, what is the ruling of this?
There's some nuances, and I, I am not a land use attorney for South Carolina. Um, I really don't want to quote law that I might be inaccurate with, so I, I'd prefer, I'd refer to Prina, or maybe we'll get back to you.
Good afternoon, council, new council. As far as the methods of annexation, South Carolina state law allows three different ones. And to kind of briefly tell you, it's like a hundred percent, an owner can make a petition. So if you own the entire property, there's also a petition for portions of them. There are two different methods for that. But it all boils down to if an annexation is to occur, a property owner has to make that request. You can't, there's, there's nothing to kind of take care of these donut holes. There's been some legislation that's gone through, um, through the state a few times, so nothing has passed as far as giving the municipality and or the county some ability to annex those, uh, what we're calling the donut holes, right? Like pieces of property that are in the county, but that completely surrounded by the city. I hope it's that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone? And the other?
Yeah.
Um, just to follow up, but there, there are ways to, um, try to convince someone to be part of our overall policy, if we have a policy. Many of the areas that have frequently come under some, um, yeah, controversy, I'll call it that, have been rural preservation. And one way to stop development is don't change the zoning. And, and so if someone, let's just use an example, if someone right behind here doesn't want to annex in the city, or the city doesn't want to annex in there, and it's rural preservation. Well, one way to stop them from coming to the county is, you know, change the zoning. They're not gonna, if it's rural preservation, it's not gonna be a warehouse, right? So those are the kinds of policies that together I'd like to see us solidify. What happens? What do we do? We, the ten of us up here as policymakers, what do we do when there is a dispute about an annexation and a donut hole in, within the area of Jasper County's comprehensive plan? That to use Lisa's words, want to push that to be developed inside city borders. I think that's one of the things that I'd like to see us as a group come to some agreement. And, and like I've mentioned before, one way to do it, whenever that happens, whenever that happens, we have a joint meeting and we make the decision, all ten of us together.
And even to get ahead of that's oftentimes in other places where I've, I've, uh, in my career, the county has a, a land use plan, a future land use plan. And if that marries up with what, what the city would do upon annexation, then, you know, everyone's happy because it's already been thought about, to your point. We're saying the same thing, but yeah, absolutely. And I did want to say, and Andy, please correct me if I'm wrong, but in some instances, it's been my understanding and my, my thought that sometimes in Jasper County, the rural preservation was almost like a holding, like a holdings, and it almost, because it was an area that clearly would be developed at some point. I'm not talking about everywhere in the county by any stretch, but certain areas around municipalities that it was designated as rural preservation until such a time as a request came in to develop, and then, you know, they would encourage that annexation. Maybe there's a better way to do that, but that's been my understanding. If I'm incorrect with that, let me know, Andy, but I, I think I'm kind of accurate with that.
I think for all the laymen in the room, I'm not a planner either, but you're good, right? I think that was a significant down zoning effort that happened back in two thousand and seven, and that was just exactly, uh, as you described, several placeholder that it's defined what that was, but not allow too much by right zoning of gellati on those properties. Uh, Mayor, I would just say one other comment to your suggestion about meeting. I think Matt was alluding to that. Uh, I think this really hinges a lot on the county and the county zoning within the growth boundaries. And what is not only our policy, but uh, we could, uh, take a strawberry look at the transitional zoning so that, uh, perhaps weren't on that with our cop plan, so that our planning commission had, um, perhaps more of a challenge to upzone those, uh, items that wouldn't be consistent with your plan. You had further restrictions on that transitional zoning. And then, uh, those discretionary items, the PDDs and so forth would be a, uh, would be a, for the council to take a policy on, a policy decision on. Because all this obviously is only as good as the political will behind it. But I do sense that, uh, we have a, a united, so. I'd ask that you allow the staff to try to work on some safeguards and some ideas about how we might make that stronger at the administrative level so that you wouldn't have to deal as much.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Matt. I, you're again, uh, what this meeting is all about, at least to me, is, is the start of conversations. So that, you know, we're not here to, you know, pick in an old scab. We're here to prevent a new one from developing, a new one. So, uh, thank you, Andy. Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you Jasper County Council for, uh, you know, being willing to talk and look at these things in a new way. in a new way. So that we know what this leads to, what is the next step in developing a joint policy, a joint council policy towards annexation requests and donut holes? Do we, Matt or Andy, what, what's our path forward? I, I think what we want to try to do here is if we agree that we need a policy, let's get down what exactly we're going to do the next time something like this, you know, a question comes up. Do you have any suggestions? What's our next step in this, in this conversation?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think the most immediate thing we can do, ironically, is it yesterday, Lisa, the day before yesterday? Lisa and I met with a developer wanting to do a residential, you, what, 500 and some year? And it just about lets the city, right? So it's a practical example that none of us really know about, but it's hitting us. I think most immediately, we just need to get together as staff. I think we just need to get together and stab when these, we get together and stab when these things pop up until we have the, the policies of it. But if you'd allow us to work, two staffs to work together, I'm sure we can come up with some strategies to tighten up potentially the transitional zone.
Okay. And I would suggest to all of us up here that if we have any suggestions, that we forward it on to our staff as well. And we, we have, if you look at the page with annexations, since we adopted the policy, we have two under consideration right now, one of which is outside our growth boundaries that are causing us a great deal of trouble, so to speak. So if we should pledge to each other that these are conversations that we have with each other, I think Mr. Ralph, that is in first.
Yes, and one other component I think we need to bring to the table, but we bring the councils together, is our utility providers to make sure that the infrastructure is ready to go or the timeline of infrastructure or the lack of infrastructure in those areas whenever we're making our decisions up in those transitional zones. So we don't get it to an area to where we put the car before the horse.
Can I fuck?
Yep. I think you, you were talking about the first step. I think the first step is for us, Jasper County and Hardyville, to have a joint resolution saying this is our policy. You start at the beginning and say, well, we're, we're supposed to be policymakers. We start by putting in writing that this is the resolution. And it's what we do is, I will say to our staffs, and this is something you could do, is let's get a joint resolution and we mirror each other's resolution so we're showing that we have unity. And I keep on saying this, and I'm going to bring this to Ridgeland. I know Ridgeland wasn't in this.
I'm just saying, don't read my back.
I think that Ridgeland should be included in this joint resolution that we work as a county to have a growth plan, not only Hardyville, not only Jasper, but Jasper County as a taller. Every entity in the county will be a part of it. In that way, we not going to reinvent the wheel when Ridgeland starts growth and gets into off of that. So we have a joint, and that's an invitation. It's not that you have to or not have to, but I think that you should be involved. So that's my, my suggestion to start it all off. We can talk about it, but a joint resolution would be the perfect way to say in writing, not saying that we had a meeting and look at it, we have a resolution that's in writing. Thank you.
Mayor Kemp and, I mean, Mayor Williams, it's chairman.
Thank you, thank you.
You both said some very, very wise things there and it does need to happen. We have to stop the zone shop. It's hurting everybody and these developers come to us and then they say, well, we have timetable, we have a timetable, we have a timetable. We are the policymakers, we decide the timetable. That's where we should be with this. And to quote my friend Bo here is, let's not be in a hurry to make a mistake. Take our time, work this out the right way so that five years from now, two years from now, we never have to revisit this question again.
We have a countywide policy and we'll stick.
Mr. Kemp, do you suggest, I love what you said, which is rare. But do you suggest that our staffs construct a this resolution, rabbit details, and then bring it to our councils so we could debate it? Or I will, I will have, oh, excuse me, I have a workshop that we can talk about it as a council on Monday.
Okay.
We'll do it that fast. I mean, this is nothing, this is not a delaying motion. This is just, we put in writing, that's, then what people say, why aren't you? We say, here it is. Here's our joint resolution. We're all on the same page. Great. What I'm asking is who, who writes the words? And, and that should be staff, right? Okay. And then would they have counsel and, and both councils, if there's any input into what that, you want the staff to put in that resolution? I think we should all forward that to our staffs to, so they can include that into, into the document.
And the.
It's my turn. I'm chairman.
I just would say that it should be a joint resolution, not just, I mean, I went through it the first time with the election board, where it was supposed to be a mirrored resolution or a mirrored ordinance. And Jasper had what their ideas, Hardyville had their ideas, and it really got messy. A joint resolution and maybe another meeting where we have a joint resolution.
Where the staffs were working together.
The staff is the one that will do it, but we are the ones that are going to pass it.
Yes.
Are you finished?
Yep. For now.
Anyone else? Okay. I think that was a great discussion. And next, a discussion that had already tried to get started, we'll now bring to the last item on our agenda, the discussion of shared emergency services. You know, I think, I think all of us believe, hopefully, that we can always do better. And if we, I've said this a number of times, if we were just starting a new county, how would we do it? We have no previous ways of thinking. How would we do it? What would be the best way, the most economical way to deliver services for the people who pay the taxes? And I think that's what we will, to me, that's what we want to accomplish with this conversation. What's the best way to deliver emergency services for the people of Jasper County? And at the, to the, not only efficiently, but economically. So having said that.
There were a couple of people who were talking about shared services. Berutsa, take us go. Mr. Arzillo, do you want to start us off?
Hey, Chris Mayor. Again, yeah, shared service and they're about Aprils, going to save us some money, got to do it. And I think these two councils, as far as I can tell, are going to work together and do whatever needs to be done. As far as setting down the policies and procedures and all that, that's all fine. But like you said, Mr. Mayor, it all comes down to accounts of not one of those people that we, we deal with are going to be the same. And I know these is kind of going back and forth on two different things, but it's for the same, for the shared services, as long as these two councils keep, come together and, and say, we want to do it, that's what we're here for tonight. Because if we want to do it, then we can hire consultants or somebody to help us to that. And I think, like I was saying before, if you kind of spell out at least the three things where it sounds for me like Mr. Migg, where he got those sweet days in mind, then we just move forward. And I hope that rounded it out, at least for me, and I'm sure you will make it perfect. But yeah, I for one, agree on shared services and I can give my name is Ray, agree shared services. Ready to move forward, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
I, I agree with Mr. Arzillo. This is a big issue. It's a big question. I think this is something that we as two councils need to come together with and decide, we need a consultant. This is way above my pay grade to decide how this is to work. We want it to work, we need it to work, but it's not something that I feel I have the, the knowledge to, to put together. I think these two councils need to come together and decide, oh, this is what we want to do, then let's move forward with it. And I think a consultant is the best way for us to move forward with it.
Any other ideas?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Before shared services was kind of the catchphrase, shared services happened way before the growth exploded in the county. Those things were there for many, many years in place and there was a good thing put in place in the early 2000s as it pertained to the, the fire emergency services for the county. And we slowly transitioned away from that around six years ago, especially on the southern end of the county. And, and I'll paraphrase some of the reasons why, but just because we got the money now doesn't mean we have to spend it. Couple hundred thousand dollar decisions that ended up costing the county billions. I want to make sure that we have a service delivery level county, countywide that we can work on, but there are certain things in your urbanized areas to where we need to look at things a little bit differently, a little bit more in depth. Everybody need to make sure that we keep our taxpayers first in mind, we're making sure that there's no duplication, duplication of services. We need to make sure that they're the ones that get the best bang for their buck. And then enhancing some of those services again on the northern end of the county. This is not a topic that's been new, this is a topic that's been ongoing for many years, something that was put in place again back in the early 2000s. We transitioned away from it, but we definitely need to go back and, and, and look at these things strongly.
Anyone else? I'm going to float a alternate proposal to Mr. Miasma. And this is not a new one, but anyway, what I would suggest is that both our departments, excuse me, I'm going to go back to something Ms. Kemp said, all three of our departments should get together. Each one of those departments has the statistics, the call statistics, the, the, where they were. So you had the statistics, which a consultant, where that's the first thing they're going to ask you, get, get us the statistics. So instead of having a consultant, they're waiting six months, 12 months to get the results that he's going to give based on the data we're going to give to them, because by the time you hire him and do everything. What I would suggest is that all three departments get together, bring their data, discuss it, and perhaps instead of a consultant, get a meeting moderator, a mediator who can help guide the conversation and, and, because we had the experts, we had three excellent departments. Let's put them together and the moderator would only be there to facilitate the conversation, just like any retreat we go to, we hire a moderator to help facilitate the conversation. I think that we have the consultants already, the three heads of our three emergency services departments. And that would be my alternate suggestion and a little twist of what, what Mr. Mearsman suggests.
I agree with you, you're saying, Harry, and it.
That'd be, Cheryl. I, I agree with your modification, Harry, and then once we have that meeting of the three of our heads, a consultant might be useful at that point to help us over the rough spots or areas that we're not quite sure about. But I think starting with our own folks would make more sense to me. So I'd like to just support what you've said and see, it was a good idea bringing the groups together, as you said.
So we have another modification, which is good, good suggestion, Bob.
We did have an attempt at shared services, maybe four years ago, five years ago, and that was the voter registration. And I hope we learned from that because the way the ordinance has re, we're supposed to have staff together, they're supposed to create a joint resolution or ordinance and it goes. But what happened was Hardyville went in one way, Jack went in the other way, and it was a mess. But I think the mayor had to step in and say enough's enough. And I think that's something that, I, I like what Bo says, that we have to have somebody that's neutral and not a moderator and, because moderations are just going to moderate. And, and we need somebody from the outside looking in because there's too many personal things that get involved in doing joint services. And we'll be better off in the long run. In the short run, yes, we can do something. But in the long run, some of these major shared services need to be done by an outside looking in rather than inside looking out. No, that's my thing. And it's not, it's a, it's just a wary thing that I had when we did the, the election board. And it was supposed to be so simple and it wound up being simple, but the fight to get there was a problem. So just beware of what we ask when we're saying that staff do it all together because each one's going to have a personal reason for not to. Well, we want to be a neutral, we want to have something neutral, exclusive, off, not just one or the other. So that's my two sets.
Anyone else?
And I will say sometimes when consultants do get involved, things get a little messy because they don't know where things are for the average, everyday citizen. So I do think put all, all the entities together to, to discuss this, to come out with what the best service delivery model would be for the citizens, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that reap the services that will be coming. But definitely, we got to liber egos, we got to leave our empires at the norm, we got to create what's best for the citizens.
This is the first conversation of, of what is going to, I'm sure being a complicated conversation. So next steps here, let's see if we can agree on what the next step is. The suggestions are hire a consultant right away. The next suggestion was get. The next suggestion was get all the chiefs together, and then the other suggestion was after they're together, then hire the consultant. So, uh, is there a general feeling as to what, uh, what should be the first step? Again, I, I'm in favor of, hey, let's get our chiefs together, let them get the data together, see what they come up with and then go. That should be the first step. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think that's a good plan and we may only need a consultant, but if we do need a consultant later down the line, we'll know what type of consultant to consult with.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with, with John. Let's use our in-house staff to their best ability. And if, at that point, we need to bring in a third party to analyze all of their data and present it to us as a council strictly from an outsider's point of view, I think that would be the best idea. But I think you're right, the, the heads of these departments, they know what the needs are, they deal with it every day. Let them do their jobs first, let them, let them come up with their answers and then we can proceed from there.
We might even, uh, if we want to take that step, you know, the RF, the RFQ process is going to take some time. You could have the meeting at the same time right up in RFQ and prepare for that consultant and kind of cut down the, the time. Jasper, any, any thoughts on what, uh, we've proposed?
Any? No, anyone?
Um, it's all bits or scrapes, and, and I think that's your concern, Harry. Uh, my concern too. Most important thing here is seeing a word relationship develop to a T. If we can get past that, we can do anything, but if we can, then we're wasting money with the consultant server. So we work on our relationships for me, now with frequently, we do exactly as you suggested, let staff, let these, uh, park the heads come together, put something together, and then if it gets to the point where we see a worthwhile, whatever, but we're going to throw a lot down the tube if, if, um, we can't get it right. And now we, we, we don't spend the time before then. Also, thank.
I guess I agree that we should have a staff work getter and come up with, see what they have. But beware that, I think you're perfectly right, that we should know who, uh, we need to facilitate this, meaning that once we get all the information, we get everything together, if everything works out, we're okay. But we have to understand that in the background, we may need a consultant, you know. It's, it, the first step is getting the staff together and giving us the timetable, first of all, when this could be done and how fast could be done. And then give us some updates and we can get back to another joint meeting, inviting Ridgeland, if they care to, to do this. And again, we work as Jasper Kent. So I'm agree, I guess what we're all agreeing on the same thing was have staff work together and go from there.
Dennis, give me, I'm there, I'm going to open it up to the public. So councils, if I hear correctly, our next step will be to ask our three chiefs, our two chiefs, then invite Yudrin to get together and start the first conversation go. And then come back to our respective councils and report on that conversation. Is that fairly state the will of both councils? Yes.
It was by timeline, timeline. What's the timeline? We need a timeline.
Okay, you, what's your suggestion? Or have them come back?
Have them come back. We, we can't, we're, we're doing the policy, let them, but we just, the policy is we want a, a date what they can say, a, a date that they're going to come back to us.
You want to say by the first council meeting in August, we have a date where they would be meeting, or establish that date?
Well, or why don't we, my suggestion was to, uh, say to them, uh, that we want them to meet by such and such a date.
Sixty days.
Thirty.
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 For them to heed for thirty and to bring it back to us in a simplified form in sixty days, because they may need require numerous meetings in that kind.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do this? They were suggested they meet for the first time within thirty days and they can always report back to us and say they need an extension of time. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is terrific. Any other, before I open it up to the public, starting with the Mr. African of Ridgeland, is there anyone else from council that he can add? Sure.
Sorry. You're trying to spoil my night.
I'm a, hold it. Make sure you get it right, Phil.
She's telling you something.
Mr. Mayor?
My, my observation here is what kind of data are we looking to mine from these agencies? Uh, I, what's the criteria? What's the data? What are we trying to achieve with all this data that we're getting? Are we trying, are we trying to find shorter runtimes, uh, shorter response kinds? What are we trying to achieve here? I mean, with the shared services, what, what's the end goal?
Mr. Mayor?
May I comment on that, Mr. Mayor? First of all, I want to thank you all because, uh, we appreciate this refreshing discussion of all the same page. In my view, uh, the agencies getting together, it would be reporting to you what's actually taking place currently. I think you had, had that starting point about what the call volumes are, what the types of calls are, how many are being fielded in different agencies. Now, I can, I can see that done, know our chief has already started that, that work. To see that done on spatially on that, so that we give you some framework and as Mr. Mayor, you said, this is data that we have to provide to a consultant anywhere. So, uh, excuse me, that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that it's just a static picture of what we're doing currently, to see if there are obvious, uh, uh, things that jump out at us that we, we may want to think about guiding a future consultant.
Uh, and, and I agree with that because, you know, there are some areas that are hot spots that have very heavy call volume and then there are some areas that are not hot spots. So we have to be able to reconcile that if we are talking about shared services, we have to figure out how those shared services are going to mesh with that data. So that's what I'm worried about. At the end of the game, like Mr. Roll said, it's not about somebody's ego, it's not about, uh, you know, the turf war or whatever it is. At the end of the day, it slides on the line and how quickly you provide top-notch pre-hospital treatments or success, because they're paying for this out of their taxes. So we owe it to them to give them a hundred and ten percent. Just my.
If I could say, we have excellent, uh, shared services now. Our mutual aid is probably some of the finest in the nation. But if we can improve, there's always, like the mayor said, there's always room for improvement. And I think there, we can find ways to be there. We have, uh, service providers within mile of each other. It's not efficient and it's not about the money, it's just about providing the best service to the county residents, be it Hardyville, uh, rural county or Ridgeland. We have to work to provide them with the best services at the best cost. We can't continue to do things the way we have. We have grown immensely. Uh, we talk about the policy from five or six years ago. Look at what we've changed. We're percentage-wise, we're the fastest growing county in the nation and we have to find a way to keep up with it. And I think this is a first step.
This, close this all out, just rely on, we have to rely on our staff to come back to us. I mean, we can, we can say we want it this way, we want it this way. Let the staff come back to us, because really, sitting down here, I can tell you what I think is there, but it may not be reality. Let's get some reality and put in, input to it and then make decisions. I think we leave it to the staff, we gave them thirty days, they come back in thirty days, at least with a, a framework of what they think, and then we can make decisions on, based on that, not just based decisions like what we did today.
Okay, I've got a, we'll finish with council, uh, comments, but first, let me open it up to the public and I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Advocate from Ridgeland to get us all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank both the councils for, um, what I think is a great first step, uh, towards addressing some real issues. Uh, I was actually going to make another suggestion. I'd love to see the chiefs come back with a form of joint report, uh, areas of cooperation, areas that we might disagree, uh, discrepancies in fire response for urban versus rural, uh, because obviously rural, I don't think anybody would disagree with me that if rural, uh, fire protection is a completely different animal than, than urban. So, uh, uh, there are many different things to consider, but I think it would, I, just a suggestion, uh, perhaps it might be more productive to have a joint report issued by the three chiefs on areas where we can cooperate, areas where, where we could improve, uh, suggestions and operational, uh, improvements, things of that nature. So, you know, we kind of give them a framework of, of what we would expect them to come up with, and I think that might be more productive. Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else from the public like to come forward?
It's our kind of frame that you want us to study?
Please come on.
I see you want to come up? Okay. I, I don't lie. I'm like, uh, for, for the guidance, we just would like to know what, what period of time you want us to study? You want to do year-to-date, previous year, you want to do a five-year study, seven-year study? How would you like for us to proceed on that?
What do you suggest?
We can do, uh, we could do a five-year. Are you comfortable with a five-year? I mean, we could take it back as, if you want two-year. Okay.
Years, because the, the growth in the past two years, you've seen, it's leveling off now. That's where we've seen the growth and we have an idea of where we are going to be growing now. You go, we're Hardyville, the new developments are starting, Ridgeland has some going, just about two years and see where we're at and project from there.
A two-year timeframe? Yes, sir. Understood.
Okay. Any other, uh, suggestions from council?
Only other thing I'd like to add is kind of like, uh, two-eighths of there, when we look into some of those transitional and growth strategy, we need to keep that in mind whenever we're thinking of this, because there will be places that annex, there will be places that, uh, require additional services. So we need to keep that as a part of the, the, the work of that as well, to make sure that we're keeping that in there, because what could be county today may be city a year from now.
Fair enough.
So if everyone's comfortable with two years and are you, if you're comfortable with two years, then, uh, two years it is.
All right.
For two years prior to 2025.
Yours calendar year 23, calendar year 24.
That makes sense? Okay. All right. Yes, please.
Good with that? All right. I know the chief bonds isn't here, so we'll, I just wanted to confirm with Mr. Advocate.
Good evening, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. But we're still in public input? Anyone else from the public who'd like to come forward and make a comment? Yes, sir, come forward, state your name and address for Paul LeCurt.
Uh, Gene Chicorelli, Hardyville, Tucson City. I realize the, uh, the issue is fire departments at this point, and I don't want to throw an extra hand grenade. I'm sorry, losing my voice. But what about police, fire, beside fire and EMS, uh, police and sheriffs?
This is a, a shared services conversation. Everything should be on a table.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Does everybody agree?
Yes, there may be legalities with the sheriff's office.
I think there, I think the, uh, the, there may be, we don't know. Take a look. This is shared services, the general conversation, it's not limited to fire and rescue. If there are suggestions, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure the police department would like to be involved, right? Chief? So, um.
All first responders?
All first responders. Is it, is council agree with that?
I agree. I think there are legalities with sheriff's office, but I bring them all to, they could come to the table and if anything, it could maybe jointly enhance services.
Let them tell us and, um, what they come up with. And maybe it's not shared services, but maybe when it comes to law enforcement, it's some new form of, uh, memorandum of understandings. Cooperative effort.
I really think that today was just, we had to start someplace. You know, this is, it wasn't in the comment, it was not, we didn't exclude, all we did is this is the starting point and that's it. Uh, I'd like to see other shared services, uh, purchasing, there's a whole plethora of other items that we could do. But I think this is the first time and this is where the most dramatic cost savings could come from.
So first responders it is and we'll, we'll go from, we'll go from there. So fire, DMS and law enforcement. Anyone else from the public would like to come forward this time? All right. So, uh, what I'm going to do to finish up, I'm going to do like we do at council meetings and offer the microphone, um, to each council member, if there are any further last comments that they'd like to make, uh, given, uh, today. And I'm going to start with our guest to my right, um, Mr. Arzillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All I'd like to say is I look forward to working with, in Hardyville. I always say my family there, but with a lot to keep peace, uh, so I'm willing to, but with a lot to keep peace. I don't think I'll have to, I think we're all on the same age here. And that's all I got to say before to run this west.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my dad go the same thing that Councilman Arzillo said, it's a, it's a good day where we can all get together. Hopefully we could do a lot more cooperative things between not only, uh, the city of the county as well as the town as well, we all come to the same platform where we grilled everything all the time, absolutely not. But if we all have a seat at the table and make decisions for the whole county collectively, that's a good thing. And this is a step in the right direction, uh, for all the agencies here to try to collaborate, make good decisions and, and hopefully, uh, we'll be able to do this more to the future.
Mr. Kemp, uh, could someone put the timer on?
Thank you, Josh.
I already did that.
He did have the video, but my guy's still stuck in traffic.
I'm not sitting next to a rural.
I want to tell you, it warms my heart that we are here. People looking and listening to this and all that. I go back to the first leadership lunch in Leanne where, if everybody doesn't know it, that every month, the administrator, family managers, the mayors and myself meet for lunch to talk, just to discuss. The first meeting, we all talked about kids, we all talked, we didn't talk business, we just got comfortable together. The second meeting, a little bit more, the third meeting, we get involved, we're involved in that, we're talking. We're involving now, we're talking, we're discussing. So this is what I think this is today. This, we've gone a lot farther than the first meeting, but we are now understanding each other. We all sat here in front of everybody and said, yes, we want to work together. So now we have a path forward, not only on this, but many other things. So if we have a dispute or if we think something's going to happen, we have the right now, we can call up and say, hey, look, this is happening. What can we do to make it better for all us? Thank you. Mayor, pretend mute, sir.
I actually thought this day would never come to see both our councils working together and in such a harmonious way. So it actually warms my heart too, to see us taking steps to work not separately, but together. So I am just looking forward to this going upwards and onwards.
That's what I think.
I think we've created a good blueprint here today and I think it's going to be just some very exciting things down the road.
This is kind of like a first date.
I'm not custo, it's, uh.
Today it's Dutch now. But just like a first date, we're getting to know each other. We're deciding that, you know, this is something that we all want to do. We're going to have that second date as, as we move, as we move forward and it's a good thing. We've accomplished a lot here today, something that I didn't ever think that we could, we could possibly do. And then we've opened the door now with step through that door and take this all the way. Because whether it's rural Jasper County, whether it's Hardyville, Ridgeland or not, we're all here in our respective councils to do the best for the citizens. We put aside everything else, our, our own municipalities, our, our own goals or whatever we have and decide as a group, what is best for all of the residents, whether it's police, fire, whatever shared services we come up with. Because in the end, that's who we're all responsible to. And I think today we've started that process and let's see it through.
Well, as probably the oldest, uh, Partyville resident, you know, there's the old saying, when, when things work, don't change them. And for decades, that's what we did, county and Hardyville, original, all worked out. And we deviated from that. I am so glad to see today it would going back to the way it used to be. And I think that, uh, I'm really optimistic about, um, the future of Jasper County.
I'll close this meeting the way it started. Hardyville, Jasper County, I think this is the beginning of a beautiful friendship. Thank you all for coming today. I look forward to more productive meetings of this group and next time, Ridgeland as well. Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for coming. Oh, wait a minute, I had to, I forgot myself. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
A motion to second, all favor, please say aye. Aye, okay, thank you.